Is she there?
She's in the cloud.
She is there.
I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. With us today is Julie Orwin, President of Congregation Beth Hagavat. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, and good evening. Dear God, as we come together this evening, we acknowledge your presence among us and give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in our lives. We are grateful to live in a country where we enjoy democracy and freedom. We appreciate the beautiful town of Fountain Hills, where we are continuously inspired by the beauty of your creation. We give thanks for our dedicated leaders, who at considerable sacrifice of time and energy, have devoted themselves to seek the good for all our citizens. We ask that you bless their deliberations as they gather this evening. We pray that your wisdom would guide their decisions and that they be granted the patience they will need to bring about a harmonious resolution to the many issues they face. Watch over them and their loved ones, and bless them with the knowledge of your love and concern for all creatures. And at this night also, dear Lord, we pray for peace in the world, a better understanding among mankind, and for the children that are troubled. Amen. Oh, thank you.
Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mary Yates.
President.
Councilmember LaGaye.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Okay, let's start off with my report. I hope everyone's had a great summer. Hope you've had time to visit with your family and friends. John and I did some traveling this summer, but when returning, it seemed to always quote that famous line, "There's no place like home." Every time we leave Fountain Hills and we come back, we're even more appreciative of the beautiful town and the wonderful residents that we have here. At our last meeting, I asked everyone to help out our business community by making a big effort this summer to shop Fountain Hills. The summer is not over yet, so please keep it up. Our businesses in town depend on our permanent residents to help out, especially during these quieter months, and I know that they appreciate each time you shop right here in town. And don't forget that each purchase you make here adds sales tax money, which becomes revenue for our town, to not only pay the bills, but maintain the amenities that we all enjoy so much. At the Economic Development Committee meeting of MAG this week, we discussed new initiatives by Peoria and Gilbert following the mile of Phoenix to develop more efficient ways to service the community by streamlining permit process. Their ultimate goal is electronic document viewing, online permitting, and over-the-counter review of simple permits. It's about streamlining government, but most important, improving customer service. We have begun to do that a lot right here with our online businesses, and we'll look for other ways to better serve you. MAG also authorized a study with Thunderbird School of Management, whereby the students will conduct a study of older adults to engage their talent to grow the economy and act as mentors. This will analyze the wealth of talent in our many aging communities. Here in Fountain Hills, we don't seem to have a problem of engaging our seniors, who are some of our best volunteers. Fountain Hills Unified and Fountain Hills Charter School would like me to remind everyone that school has started, so be extra careful when driving around town, especially in the mornings, and late afternoons when the children are walking and biking to and from school. Thank you. That concludes my report. And now we go on to call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, one card. Charles Vassalero.
Thank you. Charles Vassalero, 36-year Fountain Hills resident. I am here to ask you not to approve the expense for hiring a consultant who designs aquatic centers. I would rather you hire a devil's advocate that would report the disadvantages, concerns, and especially financial problems that could come with only an operating aquatic center. Do we not have more important and necessary things to spend tax dollars on? The Great Recession in Arizona is not over. I don't care what the president says. Our town has cut over one-third of its employees, cut funding for some programs and lower funds for others. Are repairing our rapidly deteriorating roads not a first priority? How about funding our school overrides? Do we not want to maintain our A rating? The number-one reasons families look at a town and cities to move to is the cost of housing, then how good their schools are, not if they have a public pool. Successful businesspeople know you learn more from your failures than you learn from your successes. I do not want to see our small town take on what I believe will be a financial failure. Scottsdale has a population of 230,000 people; it's over 55,000 people for each of its four aquatic centers. Mesa has eight centers in and around the city; their population's 452,000. That's two is over 55,000 for each center. Rio Verde has 1,811 full-time residents, no kids. Their town in Tautavani have two private country clubs with pools. No one has done a survey on how many pools we have in our homes, condos, and apartment complexes in Fountain Hills. Eighteen minutes from here, there is an aquatic center. If it's too far for our people in our town, why would anyone want to drive to Fountain Hills to use an aquatic center from the three towns I mentioned? I will not attend the meeting on August 12th, which I believe to be a motivation talk, rah rah rah, having an aquatic center. They wouldn't want to hear my report on the financial problems with it. They will not discuss the disadvantages, concerns, and possible financial problems having a center in our small town. I think their chance should be, "It's so cool to build a pool." Our town is too small to own and operate even a small aquatic center. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? Okay. We have two items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve them as listed?
Mayor, second.
And roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mary Yates.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Councilmember LaGaye.
Aye.
Mayor seven zero.
Thank you. Going on to our regular agenda items, the first is consideration of appointing five citizens to serve on the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission for a three-year term beginning August 11, 2014, and ending December 31, 2017. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as it says, we have appointing of the five citizens to serve on the McDowell Mountain Preserve Commission for a three-year term beginning in August. This is pretty much a holdover from the consolidation until the, hopefully, we'll be able to start the trailhead, and the commission still wants to work with that, and then it'll come in into the consolidation program after that.
Okay, thank you. And I will start with the three, who I'd like to say something about each of the five, especially the three who are current members and who are continuing to serve as commissioners. The first is Tom Barbarick. He served on the Parks and Recreation Commission for three years. Is Tom here? If you're here, just let me know that you're here. He's on the MMPC since January 2009. The work groups that he's been associated with are Preserve Marketing and McDowell Mountain Month, and he is currently the vice chair of the MMPC. Gerard Bichelia, he's on MMPC since February 2011. He's with the work groups Preserve Marketing and McDowell Mountain Month, and he is currently the chair of the MMPC. The third current member is Klaus Shadley. He's on the MMPC since February 2011 with the work groups Preserve Access and McDowell Mountain Month. The other two who are new to the commission, or will be if we appoint them all, is Thomas Ayello. He's a patrol, he was a patrol officer and then a detective with the New York Police Department for over 20 years. He purchased his home in Fountain Hills in 1994 and has lived here full-time since March of 2012. He's an avid outdoorsman, including tennis and hiking, and he's a member of our Sunset Koanis. The last applicant is Ken Thornton. He has 40 years of experience as a civil engineer, recently retired. He and his wife moved to Fountain Hills two and a half years ago. He's an avid hiker and a biker, and he's a member of the Trail Builders Group. I move to appoint Tom Barbarick, Gerard Bichelia, Klaus Shadley, Thomas Ayello, and Ken Thornton to serve on the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending December 31, 2017.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor seven zero.
Thank you. Our next is a presentation by the Residential Utility Consumer Office, also called RUCO, regarding the Arizona Corporation Commission's decision on Chaparral City Water Company's request for a rate increase, possible direction to staff. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, RUCO, Residential Utilities Consumer Office, is here tonight to further discuss the activities of the rate case for the Chaparral City Water Company. But as you know, RUCO is, was established to represent the interest of residential utility consumers in a regulatory proceedings of the ACC. Their responsibility is to research, study, and analysis residential utility consumer interests, and they also prepare briefs and arguments and proposed rates or orders to intervene, appear on behalf of the residential utility consumers. As you know, April of 2013, Chaparral filed a rate application to the ACC for a 34.83% rate increase. The town of Fountain Hills applied and was granted as an intervenor of that rate case soon after that. The Arizona Residential Utilities Consumer Office position from that was a 7.87% increase. And throughout the hearing, throughout the hearing process, the Corporation Commission staff recommended 11.23%, and the town concurred with the ACC at the time, the ACC staff, and subsequent to the RUCO positions. The administrative law judge for that hearing recommended a 16.28% increase on that three-quarter-inch meter residential meter, but the ACC Commission granted a 17.81% rate increase. The actual hearing itself commenced in February of 2014. RUCO consistently recommended the lowest rate increases throughout the hearing process. And on July 30th, there were errors discovered in the decision on the, by the, on what the Corporation Commission did, which resulted in actually a larger increase, a 20.29% increase. Again, the town Fountain Hills on July 10th applied for a rehearing of the decision by the Corporation Commission of the, of Chaparral's water rates. One commissioner on the Corporation Commission independently motioned for a reconsideration of that, of that consideration, and, but it was denied by the rest of the commissioners. We still have that decision in front of them, but actually, we expect that to be denied as well. We filed that again on July 10th for that reconsideration. It's yet to be heard, but again, we think it's, that's going to be denied as well. Tonight, again, you have representatives from RUCO here to better explain what happened during the rates and the resulting decision of the, of the ACC. And after that presentation and discussion, it's recommendation to proceed with RUCO to file an appeal if they proceed with that to the Arizona Court of Appeals. So I think we have representatives here tonight that would like to give a presentation regarding the case itself.
All right. Which of you gentlemen is going to?
I think it's a privilege. I think that we're going to, we can, so just one minute.
I have one.
We changed them just a little bit.
Oh, okay. We'll show that.
The ones that I have left could be passed along. I don't have a line for everybody. I wasn't sure how many people were going to be here, but let me go over. I guess I shouldn't be going for myself. Couple of things, I'll just take the shortest route as fast as I can, but just a couple of things, who RUCO is and what are, what are our, we were established a number of years ago in our prin-
We were established a number of years ago, and our principal project was a-
Excuse me. You need to face this way, so the camera can get you.
I'm sorry.
People at home will be watching, and this will, this is recorded.
All right.
Thank you.
We were, we were established a number of years ago to, to, to look out for the interest of the residential rate payer. And I would like to say that what we do is we review every, the majority of the rate cases that are filed, that are of any significant size. And, and we typically do that with every large company. I'd like to say that, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. Thank you to the attorney who filed the petition for a rehearing. It was very well done, and it helps us quite a bit in our work. So just to give you a little-
Could we have your name?
That would help.
We'd like that.
I'm sorry. My name is Robert Neese. I'm Bob. I'm the chief of accounting and rates for the Residential Utility Consumer Office. Those folks with me is Dan Pozefsky, who happens to be our lead legal counsel, and then we have our lead analyst with us also, who happen to be the gentleman that worked on the case for Chaparral. So with that, I'll go forward and just kind of reiterate a little bit more about what the gentleman that was talking there said. Epcore filed the case for $2.7 million. The commission approved 2.2 million, 2 million, not 2.2, but 2 million. The administrative law judge had recommended 1.6 million. And typically, the, the commission would listen to their own staff and their own legal advi, or their own administrative law judge, but this one was somewhat of an exception. And at the hearing itself, the commission decided to give the company another $428,000, over and above what their own ALJ had recommended. And the staff analysis showed 1.3 million, and we showed almost 800,000. Now, so in other words, the commission overruled their own administrative law judge by almost a half a million dollars. Now, that's not the entire increase that's going to happen to the folks in Chaparral. If you look at the, where it says it's going to get worse, over the next five years, the company itself had filed what is called a system improvement benefit mechanism, which is a new filing in Arizona. It's a new, something that the commission has just approved within the last year. And RUCO has taken exception to it in every case, and RUCO currently has a case outstanding in the court system because RUCO feels it's unconstitutional. But in the meantime, the commission has passed it, and they passed one for the Chaparral City Water Company. And what's going to happen between now and the, and five years from now is the, the folks here in Chaparral could experience another $8.50 rate increase gradually over the next five years. So in other words, what's going to happen is the rates prior to going into effect were for the, the average residential user was $37.85. With the current increase, it's $45.53. However, if it, over the next five years, if the company spends on the system improvement benefit as they have filed and projected, the rates will be $54.11, and that is without another rate case. So in other words, the, the, the rate increase is almost double of what they originally had requested. And that is not spelled out in the rates themselves at this point in time. And those rates basically will go into effect once they file for their recovery. Now, what happened in the, in the actual courtroom itself, when the, in the account, the, the ACC meeting was, one of the commissioners had introduced several amendments to what the ALJ had, 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 suggested. And two of those are first-time type deals. One of them was, it's not a first time, but it's a first time they approved it in, of this magnitude. It's called a, a tank maintenance accrual, or tank maintenance cost. In other words, they are allowed to accrue up to 200, 220,000, I believe, a year for tank painting, and there is no guarantee that they're even going to do this tank painting. But they've been allowed to go ahead and charge the ratepayers for this potential expense. The CIB itself, as I explained, was a very large approval from this commission to allow them a CIB, and in this case, while the rates aren't immediately effective, they will be over the next five years. And then one other issue that was a significant deviation was they, the, the ALJ had recom, excuse me, I'm sorry, we're talking about a depreciation expense here. The commission has approved them to, and allows them to over-depreciate their plant. In other words, if it's a fully depreciated $100 plant, and it's fully depreciated because of the methodology that you, they use in doing their, calculating their depreciation expense, ultimately, they could have as much as $200 depreciated on that particular item that I was referring to. So that in itself is something that we're, that we're going to continue to argue against, and I think anybody up there understands the fact that when you have an item to depreciate, you don't over-depreciate it. Tax, tax authorities don't allow it. Typically, generally accepted accounting principles typically don't allow it either. Another, two other things that have happened, they allowed what they call post-test your plant. That means that they have allowed the inclusion of a return on an asset that, that isn't even completed yet. And then finally, we're talking about the rate of return, which is their biggest, one of their biggest things that, that most companies try to get as high a rate of return as they can. Well, in this case, they, the ALJ had, had recommended one, one rate of return, and the commission actually increased that by a significant number of basis points, which gives them additional monies over and above what the ALJ had recommended. And that's the first time in my career that I've ever seen them increase the, the rate of return over and above what was recommended by the judge. So basically, that's what's happening. In summary, the, the, the rates, while the rates are increasing about $7 now, they'll increase another $7 over the next five years. Now, there's a, as I said, there has been a request for rehearing filed, Fountain Hills filed one. It, I believe the, the action time now, I believe, is expired to act on this, so in all likelihood, they're not going to rehear it, but not certain. I believe, I believe the time has expired. And so what, what can be done if you're, if the ratepayers are still unhappy? They can file letters to the docket itself. They can, they can file petitions with the commission, and at some point in time, with enough folks that are unhappy with the rate increase, then they can actually do something about it by filing those particular type things with the commission. And if enough people do this, then ultimately, the commission does have to act on it.
Okay. I certainly think we are going to have a lot of residents who are upset with this. We've already started to hear from them as they start to read in the paper what's going on and how much ultimately it's going to cost them. But I do want to thank you and your team for all the work that you have done. And what is the next step? Where do we go from here?
Ma'am, the next thing, if, if the decision, excuse me, just one-
Dan, is the timeframe over for the?
It's very close to being, they have a certain number of days to, to either yes, say yes or no. They have initially said no in one of their, one of their open meetings among themselves, but officially, they're, they have 30 days to reply. What's the next steps for this, for the city? Again, is to begin the filings at, with the letters at the, at the, in the docket itself, or, and writing the commissioners. That's what happens when, when, if, and if you get enough of the folks that, that do contact the commissioners and do write letters to the docket, then the commission at some point in time is obligated to do something about it.
Okay, we need to get that information out to our residents. And what about RUCO? Where do you go from here with this?
Where do we go? There's not much that we can do if they, if they refuse to rehear the case. We can't do anything ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, my name's Dan Pozefsky, and I am chief counsel for RUCO. And first off, I'd like to thank the, the board for, to follow what Bob's been saying, giving us an opportunity to speak and let you know what the facts are.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, it's a good opportunity, and understand we're not here by any means to cast any aspersions or to say anything about the commission and their decision other than to give you the facts of what was decided. And I think Bob's done a pretty good deal of giving you those facts. Where we are on it at this point is we filed a motion for reconsideration, which is typically what you need to do before you file a notice of appeal, if that's where you're going. In this case, as you're aware, you guys filed with us, and we truly appreciated it. We thought it was very well done, well worded. Unfortunately, we weren't able to convince the commission to see things our way and grant our motion. I think where that leaves- I think where that leaves us right now is the time, if it hasn't run, it's coming-
You speak a little closer to the microphone, they're having trouble hearing you. Thank you.
The, the time, if it hasn't run, is running and is being real close to running as far as running out. And we do keep track of the time, because what that does is, once we pass that time limit, then our application for reconsideration is denied by operation of the law, at which time then we go into the, the appeal phase. We probably will file a notice of appeal. The only thing I think at this point that we will appeal is going to be the issue of the CIB, that systems improvement benefits are charged, the one that's adding five. We've appealed that in a general sense, uh, in all cases where the commission has approved it at this point, will continue to appeal it until we get a decision from the Court of Appeals. So, understand, while in the best-case scenario, if we are successful, it's not going to eliminate the total increase, but a portion of the increase. Uh, there are other avenues you can go. Uh, I, it's really not my role to provide you guys with legal advice. I mean, you've got a competent attorney, I'd be happy to sit down with him and talk with him about some of your options. There are other options. Surely, addressing your concern with the commissioners is the most direct route, because ultimately, uh, the commissioners are the ones who, uh, you know, if the court doesn't do anything, this is something the commissioners can change, if that's something they wish to do.
Okay. So, are there any questions from council members? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, how many letters do we need to write?
Well, you know, there are some provisions of the law, again, uh, if the, 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 okay, there are sections of the law that allow the commission on its own motion to open it up. Typically, what I've seen done in that situation is if petitions are filed and if communities are, uh, upset enough, if that's something they feel compelled to do, they may prompt the commission through a petition to open it up on its own motion. I'm not saying it will, it's completely within their discretion. I'm just saying, if this is something you're thinking about, if there's enough discontent here and you want your voice heard, that is one way you can do it. And again, it's up to the commission, uh, because we are past the point where, uh, the provision for us asking or a party asking for reconsideration is likely to do anything, short of setting the appeal process timing. Uh, there's other provisions in the law that I'm aware of. Again, I, it's maybe counterproductive to go through them with you. Uh, they'd be some I'd be willing to talk with your council about that, you know, that you can do. But generally, um, you know, the commission has a, a lot of discretion and, uh, and they can do what they feel is right, regardless of whether you may feel it's right. Uh, surely, though, it would be worth your while to let the commissioners know that, know if you are concerned directly, that, that, that you are concerned. And how they go about it, I don't know. You're not the only, um, community in time that's had, you know, that's, uh, going to be affected in a way that there's been a lot of disagreement, where there are other communities. In fact, there's some cases going on now, which we've kind of gotten an impression there's some dissatisfaction. Uh, it is definitely worth your while, uh, to let the commission know. I mean, that's what they're there for. You've elected them. If you've got some concerns, it's always open. That's the beauty of our process.
Well, thank you for your support and your report. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir, and thank you. If, is there anything else?
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I may, um, in the previous conversation, and this is for the benefit of the public, because this is being publicized, um, not publicized, it's being presented on Channel 11, you referred to the ALJ probably several times. Could you-
Yes, sir, I will. The administrative law judge.
Thank you.
They are folks that actually said, as a hearing judge, listens to all the evidence that's presented and all the testimony from the various company, company testimony and any other interveners, and they actually write what they call a recommended order. And the recommended order goes to the commission for approval.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir, I, I should have done that up front.
That's all right, you guys. Jargon is jargon, I understand that, thank you.
Thank you so much. There's just one other thing that I would like to say, and I'm going to be passing these out to you folks, too. It's just a, kind of a written summary of what we talked about, is that, um, it's not common for RUCO to be out in making presentations like this. It's the fact that seems recently that the commission's made some unusual-type decisions, and the only way that we now can go is to the public. And that's what we're doing right now, and trying to inform them firsthand what's happening. So, and Mayor, I certainly appreciate you allowing us to come here. And council, thank you so much.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a couple of questions, probably for our manager or our attorney. Could you please remind, uh, us, when did the town become an intervenor? That's my first question.
Mayor, members of the council, um, again, when the rate, um, the, when the rate were filed back in, in April 13th, we, um, we came to the council with it, and soon after that, we, um, applied for becoming an intervenor at that time. So, it's been well over a year.
Thank you. And then this past April, we had a meeting where we agreed as a council unanimously voted to approve that, um, around that 11 percent. Would you remind us why we felt that that 11 percent was justified?
It was the staff's analysis at the time, the Arizona, the, um, ACC staff at the time did the analysis, and we recommended that one at that time, till we found out the other things that came along in the, in the, uh, rating, um, rate adjustments, such as the SIB.
And Mayor, um, I guess, and that was probably recommended due to some knowledge that the raise hadn't gone up, or that there was infrastructure needs and things like that. My last question is probably to RUCO. Were, was there any discussion on behalf of hearings, maybe, to help us understand why they didn't follow their staff's recommendation and why they didn't allow reconsideration?
Um, ma'am, there was very little discussion once the, um, the amendments were introduced by one of the commissioners. There was some discussion between the commissioners, but there was nothing that was concrete as to their reasoning for approving it. Um, so, that's the only way I can answer that question.
Well, Mayor, thank you. I, uh, would suggest then that our residents and businesses follow what we were talking about, and, um, I believe if you go on the website for the ACC, you can get a, an email address for Chairman Bob Stumpf. So, if some of those other, uh, ways of contacting them sound a little overwhelming, there, that you can do a simple email.
That's correct, ma'am. And, and the email addresses for all commissioners, I believe, are on the website. So.
Okay. And we do have two gentlemen here from the newspapers, from the Arizona Republic and from our Fountain Hills Times. So, if you could give them the, uh, literature also that you have, that would be helpful for them in writing their story, so that the rest of the community will understand exactly what's happening, since it is a very complicated issue.
Yes, ma'am. I certainly will.
Any other questions?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I'd like to ask the council's permission for direction to, for myself and the town attorney to, um, confer with RUCO on the next course of action and bring it back to the council.
Okay. Any comments or discussion on that? I think that's, that's pretty much, uh-
Could you put that in the form of a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Okay. Go right ahead.
I move to give directions as stated by our town manager, Kim Buchanan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right. Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Dan, thank you for everything you've done for us, and I know that, if I know the people of Fountain Hills, the commission will be hearing from them. Okay. Were there any speaker cards? Anyone want to speak on that?
No, Mayor, I have no speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have a speaker card, or?
I have a speaker, I am, but I am, I am with the utility and I'd be happy to provide some more history if possible.
Oh, would, all right. Would you, would you come up? Just come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
My name is Jim McKee. I'm the vice president of corporate services for Eppor Water. I've, uh, I've been here in front of the council explaining the application on a couple of occasions, and we've held a number of open houses, I believe, two open houses within Fountain Hills as well. We met with the Rotary, uh, prior to the actual application being heard. So, we have tried to get out and explain the application. And if you recall, at the time, I had indicated that Fountain Hills had not had a rate increase in six years. We also indicated in the information that we provided that we were applying for a CIB, which we consider to be a mechanism that will promote rate gradualism. It will, uh, also eliminate rate shock to the customers, because as you know, when you come forward with a, a rate increase every six years, they tend to be quite high. 34 percent at the time was a high rate increase. 20.29 is high. But all we asked for was a reasonable rate of return on equity and the recovery of our operating costs. Our operating philosophy is to provide safe water, reliable water to the citizens of Fountain Hills. We took over the utility. We have the ability to finance investment as it's required to make sure that you get that safe and reliable water. First of all, on the CIB, the CIB is a mechanism that allows us to replace pipes underground, the services that connect to those pipes, valves, hydrants, and meters. That's all. There are a number of safeguards with the CIB that were not mentioned here. It is true that we applied for the CIB in the rate application process, but that's one of the rules, because the commission has to examine the CIB in the context of the total rate base. What will happen now is we will, as we go forward, we will prepare a CIB application based on the projects that we outlined in the application. Those projects have a number, or the, the whole process has these safeguards. For example, I can't apply a CIB if an earnings test indicates that I'm making more than 9.6 return on equity. So, there is a safeguard there. The CIB application is reviewed by both the ACC and RUCO at the time, so it's not an automatic mechanism. There are, there are other safeguards, um, to ensure that the citizens of Fountain Hills are not paying for something that they're not getting. But what it does, RUCO points out that there is a rate increase, assuming that our earnings test does not indicate that we're achieving our rate of return, what it does, it, it helps to finance that underground infrastructure that we have to replace. That has to be, uh, uh, supported. And what those small increases do is they take away from larger increases five years down the road, which is what we experienced here. Tank maintenance is the same thing. Tank maintenance is a charge. We, we, uh, reviewed the tanks, and if you recall during my presentations, uh, I had indicated that we had a real bad poorly, uh, or, or poor tank in the system. And we, we undertook to ensure that those tanks are maintained in order to provide the safe and reliable water that you deserve. So, we calculated a, a potential cost for those tanks. That came out to, uh, to a $200,000 expenditure over a 18-year period of time. If we had have made it nine years, it would have been three point, or, uh, two, $440, or $440,000, I'm sorry. So, what we tried to do was to keep the amount low, and we said it's kind of amortized over 18 years. But those tanks, when they need to be replaced or fixed, repaired, they will get done. This is the mechanism to allow us to get a little bit of that funding upfront. If we find, like, if we, if we apply for a CIB, we automatically must come in for a new rate application within a five-year period. At that period in time, the commission can have a look at how have we done with our tank maintenance? And they can decide whether they're going to vary that decision at that time. So, these were mechanisms to try to ensure that any future rate increases were as small as possible. Post-test-year plant, typically, the post-test-year plant that's been allowed in applications up till now was about, you applied at, say, June the 30th, that's the end of your test year, commission would allow you to include any post-test-year plant in there that is actually in service at December 31st. They have expanded that for a 12-month period. But the thing you must remember is that all of that plant is in service and in the The, the, uh, the rate of return that was granted by the ALJ, we questioned where that number came from. It wasn't in RUCO's testimony. It wasn't in the ACC testimony. It wasn't in ours. We had asked for 10.7. We got 9.6. We got a haircut. Lastly, the depreciation methodology. The utilities here in Arizona have operated for years on the group method of depreciation. There is a potential for, under the group method, for depreciation to continue after the asset's been fully depreciated. But again, you must remember that we put the, the plant into service, we don't, we do not get an increase in the rates for the additional investment until a rate application is filed and the, and the application is approved. There can be a two-to-three-year delay on that, and it's a kind of a balancing mechanism. That's what we argued in the case, and that's what the commission heard, and that's why the commission made their decision. I won't speak to what the, the commission did, but the commission obviously saw through the evidence, and in our view, they made the right decision. However, we did get a haircut, and I want to make that clear. We had applied for a $2.7 million increase. I think at the time that I first met in front of council here, we had applied for a 3.1. But we, uh, we identified a number of issues throughout the evaluation or the testimony process. That went to 2.7. We're now down to 2. So, I just wanted to make that clear, so you had the full picture. I'd be very happy to answer any questions you have, but thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McKee, for additional information. Okay, um, let's go on to our next item. We have one staff report for items five and six. Uh, let's start with number five, consideration of resolution 2014-28 consolidating Parks and Recreation Commission, the Community Center Advisory Commission, the Senior Services Advisory Commission into a new Community Services Advisory Commission and adopting by laws. Okay?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, in the retreat, uh, for the town council back in January of 14, we discussed the, uh, the op, the, um, consideration of, of doing some consolidation of some of the commissions. The, the council, um, gave the direction to go ahead and proceed with doing that, with some considerations of what we needed to do, do some due diligence with all of the, all of the four commissions, um, and assign that to the, uh, Community Services Director. He's here to give you a report on that tonight with a recommendation to, uh, to the consolidation of those commissions.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. I apologize for my voice. I'm getting over a little something, so I will try to keep my comments as brief as possible. Um, as Mr. Buchanan mentioned, we have been in front of the council several times now. Um, most recently, at your May meeting, we requested the approval to go ahead and adopt a resolution and an ordinance that would both change the status of the three, of the four commissions, the one caveat being that the MNPC, as Cannon indicated earlier, is requesting to stay until such time as either the trailhead is built or December 31st, 2017, whichever comes first. After that time, they would also be assimilated into the Community Services Commission. But on May 1st, we came back to the commission and, and- But on May 1st, we came back to the commission and requested the resolution and also an ordinance establishing a new commission and also the bylaws. And we were given at that time the approval to take that through both the commissions and the chairs and come back with something. So, what you have in front of you tonight is the culmination of those efforts. We met several times again with commissioners. Their decision was unanimous in support of the bylaws and, most importantly, the consolidation. We met subsequently with the chairs on several occasions and hammered out an agreement on the bylaws, which you have in front of you as well. So, it's a culmination of eight months of effort on a lot of people's parts, the commission and the commission chair. So, I want to recognize that. We have at least one of the commissioners, Mr. Grell, here this evening. I know I have at least one more out of town. I can't account for the other two. But the decision, both on the commissioner's parts as well as the commission chairs, was unanimous on both the consolidation and on the bylaws.
That's great. Okay. Questions for Mark? Any questions? Okay. Any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
No? And so then I would...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize. If I may, Mark, could you kind of elaborate again on why we wanted to maintain the separation of the, excuse me, thank you, McDowell Mountain Commission?
It was actually their request through the chair. Because we are now coming much closer, and it seems like the potential for construction in the Odero Canyon and subsequently the trailhead is imminent, they asked to be, continue to be involved in that, and they have been involved in the past. They want to continue to do so. So, they kind of wanted to shepherd that process through. But they did list that their indication was that they were interested in joining the commission at either the time when the trailhead was built or no later than December 31st, 2017. So, they are on board, just that little caveat.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? No? Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Move to approve ordinance 1404, amending Town Code, Chapter 9, Article 9-2, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Create Community Services Advisory Commission.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair 7-0.
Mark, say there. Consideration of ordinance 14-04, deleting Article 9-2 of the Fountain Hills Town Code, Parks and Recreation Commission relating to the consolidation of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Senior Services Advisory Commission, and the Community Center Advisory Commission into a new Community Services Advisory Commission.
Mayor, may I? I think there was a second motion on that last agenda item.
There was a what?
I believe there was a second suggested motion, is that correct, as far as the bylaws?
There is one ordinance and one resolution.
Right. I just need to make a second motion, I think, to approve the resolution as well, under that last agenda item.
To, the first one should have been to approve the resolution, and the second one is to approve the ordinance.
Okay. Well, I just made the motion to approve the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess we did that backwards.
Do you want to change it? Or do you want to go backwards?
We all voted on it, by the way. Can we do the resolution now? All right. Same motion, move to approve the resolution, 2014-28, establishing bylaws for the Community Service Advisory Commission.
Mayor, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Consideration of resolution 2014-36, adopting the Town of Fountain Hills Municipal Sponsorship and Naming Rights Policy amended and restated August 7th, 2014. Ken?
Again, Mayor, members of the council, the council asked us to bring back some areas of discussion that you have in front of you tonight for the sponsorship and naming rights policy, and the Community Services Director has a report regarding those proposed changes.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the original policy was established last fall 2013. As Kenan indicated, there were some, over a period of time now, we've had an opportunity to get some comments back from various council members. So, we had proposed some changes for your consideration based on that feedback. There are in four general areas, which I'll relate to. One was that, under the former policy, nonprofit organizations was not definitively defined. Now, it's defined as a tax-exempt under IRS Section 501(c)(3) at the time that they make application for reduction of fees. In the past, it just simply said nonprofit organizations. The second one was the limits by which municipal sponsorships, cosponsorships, sole sponsorships, and market arrangements previously had been set at $30,000. It's now being proposed to be reduced to $10,000 before it would go to the, through the, to the council rather than the town manager. The town manager review all sponsorship, cosponsorship, sole sponsorship, market arrangements, and shall submit to the council for approval those with an aggregate value of more than $10,000. Those involving contributions or cash in hand over, or cash or in-kind of over $10,000, and those involving a closure of public access for more than one day or an event lasting longer than one week. And then finally, if a nonprofit organization wishes to have their fees reduced by 50%, they must provide a letter from the IRS granting the tax-exempt status under Section 501(c)(3). So, those are the changes that we have brought forward for your consideration.
Questions for Mark? Yes, Councilman Alki.
Thank you. Actually, this question will be more directed towards a town attorney. Andrew, going back to 501(c)(3), we talk, we're adding in the tax-exempt status, tax exemption. Now, the town as a whole obviously doesn't get any type of a tax write-off or anything by giving in-kind contribution, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, we're adding this criteria of tax-exempt under 501(c)(3) for purposes of what exactly?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Alki, the purpose of defining it is to indicate that an organization that's received a determination letter from the IRS is the benchmark by which we'll decide whether or not the town is able to be able to waive the fees for use of town facilities and other things.
What else is required, if you know, to obtain that tax-exempt status?
It's actually a fairly involved process. It is a, first, a determination and a formation of the corporation itself as nonprofit, then a request from the IRS, followed by a very lengthy process to actually get a determination letter. And it, it's a letter essentially ruling from the IRS indicating that you've met the criteria under the statute that allows you to claim tax-exempt status. So, anybody's contributions to you can be written off as tax-free, and all of your expenditures can be tax-free as well.
Mayor, if I may, one more. Now, there are some other organizations familiar, and I'm sure other council members are familiar with in town, that aren't (c)(3)'s. For example, veterans organizations fall under 501(c)(19). How would they play into this? They may not be a tax-exempt organization, meaning, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you donate to that organization, you could reduce that on your taxable income, correct?
That's correct.
So, a (c)(19) may not have that tax-exempt status, but they are, for all intents and purposes, a nonprofit organization. Is that correct?
That is correct. The statute allows for a number of different organizations. There's (c)(4) and (c)(6) are a number of different designations. The goal, from our perspective, was to make sure that it was the determination letter that was the key. So, the 501(c)(3) is not necessarily the key for us, but the determination letter that follows it.
Might it be helpful to include other organizations? Because I would hate to exclude inadvertently another organization that may be a (c)(19) or (c)(6). So, maybe that would be something of consideration.
Certainly. We can make that adjustment to the definition pretty easily.
Okay. Questions? I just have a, I have a question about the reduction from the $30,000 to the $10,000. Are there any of our current events that would be really affected by any of this? And is this, and if we have some of the events that are annually, is this something they would have to go for approval every year?
Madam Mayor, yes. As I understand it, if they reapplied for the event and if it exceeded the $10,000, then it would have to go back to the council again.
And...
The only activities that I can think of off the top of my head would be the Chinese New Year, and I believe even the Belle-Arizona falls underneath the $10,000.
Mr. Hunter?
It really depends a lot on the length of the event, not so much on the size, but on the length of the event. And that tends to be the triggering mechanism. Belle-Arizona, because it's a one-night event, their costs and our costs are relatively low.
Yeah, I just, I'm just concerned about a couple of things with that. The first is that a lot of these events, they are, there's a time, there's a time that it's very, it's really necessary for them to almost start planning for the next event when they finish their, the one, the current one. So, if they have to go through also a council approval, I'm concerned that that might be a problem for them, that they wouldn't be able to prepare for the next event in time.
Madam Mayor, it can be an issue in discussing this, for instance, with the Chinese New Year folks. Their application, we are looking at through the Special Event Committee later this month. He had expressed concerns, the head person running it, Gary Ong, had expressed concerns that he was reluctant to start marketing the event at a significant cost before he knew whether or not the event would be able to take place. But I also cautioned him that the sooner he got his application in, the more quickly we could turn it around. And so, that really amounted to a bit of a delay. So, I think it will take a time for folks to understand that there's a, if we go through this process now and it changes, that it will take a little bit longer than it has in the past.
Well, is there going to be some sort of guideline set up so that people know if you're, if you finish with this event now, you're going to have to start by this particular day in order to be able to make it for the next time? I mean, how are they going to know how long it's going to take?
I think that, we can't necessarily tell them how long it will take, but we can certainly give them some, as we did with Mr. Ong, saying, depending on what your timeframe is, we need at least this much advance notice to be able to get it in. And we suggested to him the 18th of July.
Okay.
And, but because we did not meet in July as a council, it was pushed back to the, to a later August meeting. And if we don't meet in August, he was made aware that it would likely be the first meeting in September.
Okay. And I guess the only other concern I have is that, right now, the process is basically set up where you have certain criteria for whether you decide that an event is going to take place, and your staff researches, then goes to you, and then you look at that and you decide if, by the criteria, if that meets the standards. And then, you also then have Ken, and you go to Ken. And so, we seem to have a good staff layer of looking at an event to see if it, if it meets a criteria. And I've just, I just don't understand why the $30,000 to the $10,000, why is that so important? Because, actually, my biggest concern is that it's, it's going to put some events into the hands of a government body rather than a staff. A staff is hired to do these particular jobs, but now, these, any kind of event, could be a religious group comes in and they decide to do something in the park, and they're nonprofit, and they meet all the other criteria, and they come eventually to a council, and for whatever reason, the council says, no, we don't want to have this. I just kind of see that they might be looking at this more as a political thing than a staff decision, and it might put us in sort of harm's way legally if you're, if you're making those decisions. People tend to look at this body as political and as the staff as following the rules and applying the rules to everyone. So, I'm just, I'm just concerned about this one part where, I'm just concerned about this, the council having to make a decision that I think really belongs with the staff.
Mayor?
Yes? You have a comment?
I do. I do. I think some of the discussion that we had in reducing it from $30,000 to $10,000 had to do with the amount and perhaps putting that responsibility on staff to essentially be able to give away in-kind contributions up to $30,000, which is no small amount. This council, in council's past, and I would imagine council's future, will be able to make informed decisions. And I've only been on the council for four years now, almost four and a half coming up, and I can't remember a time that we've ever rejected a special event where somebody wanted to put on an event here in town. So, I'm confident that future council members will probably review, make thoughtful decisions, and approve where appropriate. In most cases, people that I talk to, they'd rather have a council who is immediately responsive to the elected people, or the people that have elected them in the town. You know, they'd rather have them making those decisions rather than, please don't take offense, Mark, a bureaucrat that works for the town that makes the decisions behind closed doors and where it's something that's out open in the public. I have no problem with the $10,000. I think it's appropriate. I think $30,000 is a lot to put on our town manager and our staff to make that particular decision, especially in a case and a situation where it might be a little political as far as what the event is.
Any other comment? I still stand behind my, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I changed the special event policy to make it easier to have events. And I think the idea behind that was the smaller events and to expedite that. But I think when we get into the scope of the larger events that have a larger impact on the community, I think it's beneficial for it to come to the council, just so we can have that dialogue and get public input as well.
And I just want to make it clear that I'm not saying that this council or any council is going to do anything, that they are going to make as informed decision as they can. I'm just saying that the perception out there is usually that staff follow criteria and they're more neutral as opposed to a political body, and it also adds another layer of government to it. I mean, I can understand why this might be necessary, and I probably will support this. But I will also be looking at it to see how it's handled in the future. My only main concern about this, and I did speak to Andrew about it before our meeting because it is a big concern, that it will be perceived by groups, perhaps a religious group or something, some, some group like that that comes in that wants to do an activity in the park. And the council makes a good decision why they don't want it based on the facts, but yet they could easily turn that around and, whereas they would probably do it more likely with a political body than they would with a staff. Staff, pretty much black and white, here are the regulations, applies to everyone like this, that's what they assume. I actually think that people trust staff more than they trust politicians, but...
Mayor? Mayor, if I may, go, a comment, please, and question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I have a question, but I also want to make a comment that in some, in some ways, $30,000 might seem, you know, kind of like a lot, and instead of looking at it as a political thing, I kind of look at it more as a transparent thing. And I think we saw some fallback and some people who were just a little bit wondering how some of these decisions come down. And, you know, we're talking about, obviously, taxpayer money, and so, I think in this way, it's a, it's a discussion that's in public and on Channel 11 and all that good stuff. I can't imagine making decisions based on the content of what an event would be rather than just making sure that the ducks are in a row and we have all the paperwork and that kind of thing, which actually brings me to my question. The existing policy, which is (c), and I'm sorry, this is kind of because I'm here, I don't really know how to refer it to you, but it says that a request for cosponsorship for non-governmental entities, one of those criteria is that the event or program should be free and open to the public. And then, last August, when we discussed some of this, some of these changes to sort of make, streamline these, we did express opinion that we were, we didn't want public areas to be inaccessible to residents for an event that charged admission. So, I wondered if we were taking care of that or making any changes of that, that we wanted to allow, allow people to charge admission as long as they met these other criteria.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Dickey. Was that question directed to me?
Whoever can answer it.
Okay. Well, let me try to clarify that a little bit. Remember that, in addition to Chinese New Year, there are a number of other events that if there's a fee charge, we typically have closed off sections of the park, most recently, the Fourth of July Ceremony. We also do it for Heritage Fest or Oktoberfest, and there's other activities as well. So, it's not just the Chinese New Year and a lantern event, it is other activities where there's a fee charge typically does close off a section of the park. there's a fee charge typically does close off a section of the park.
Well, thank you, mayor, but I wasn't referring to a specific event, I was referring to the fact that it is written down that we will not have cosponsorships unless the criteria is met, that the event is free and open to the public. So did we want to change that? I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Okay, I guess she's asking, do we want to change it, that, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all of that, we want to change it so that, Andrew, did you get it?
It is, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the section that Councilmember Dickey is referring to is Section 7, C as in cat.
Two.
Number two.
That's right.
It's one of the criteria used to evaluate a cosponsorship with a non-governmental entity, and, and it is, when evaluating it, the, when evaluating proposals, the following criteria are used, and that, that criteria is, the event or program should be free and open to the public. So it's one of the criteria that's in the policy already that wasn't recommended for any changes, and then Councilmember Dickey's question is, because we have these blended events, do we want to change that provision to make it match what actually happens?
So perhaps just take out the word "free"?
Should be open to the public.
Open to the public, not a private event. Councilmember Dickey, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I just want to know if you want, mayor, if you all wanted to change that because our practices have obviously been not doing that, so I'm happy with that if that's, if you want to make a motion for that, something like that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just one last one, if I may. You brought up some good points, Mayor, about the religious or political events and perhaps that causing an issue. Under the current adopted version, we have under four I, religious or political associations or candidate for, running for office, are those in which must come before the council for approval currently under the current policy, and the, the staff can't approve that out of hand on their own, under the, the written policy right now. So that would have to come before the, the council anyway.
I guess I was more referring to events that where, for instance, I just, off the top, I have Pakistani Kite Festival, and they had some religious booths there at their festival, and so I was referring to something like that, where if that were not approved by the council, it could be perceived as, and, and I'm not saying that, let me make that clear, I'm not saying that we're doing that on purpose, I'm just saying it's, could be perceived that way, just because it's the way that people perceive a government body as opposed to a staff, that's all. Any other comments? No? Anything else from staff? All right, then, I'm just waiting for a motion.
Mayor, motion to approve Resolution 2014-36, amending and restating the Town of Fountain Hills Municipal Sponsorship, easy for me to say, and naming rights policy to include the amendments that we discussed regarding 501(c)(6), 501(c)(19), and any others that are, that reflect the discussion of the council as it relates to nonprofits, as well as removing "free" out of Section 7(c)(2).
Mayor, second?
Changing it to be "free and open," just to open to the public.
Just open to the public, yes.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, then, any other discussion on the issue? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right.
I'm going to drop out now. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Hey, Also and Dickey is leaving us. We are up to consideration of naming Legacy Plaza in Fountain Park, the Joe and Marge Brown Legacy Plaza, as provided for under the Town of Fountain Hills Municipal Sponsorship and Naming Rights Policy. Mark, you can't go home yet.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. You may recall that back on June the 5th, 2014, Mr. Jerry Butler with the Greening Committee approached the council about a legacy project that is in back of the Plaza Fountain Side, which is the commemorative columns, and as you can see by the diagram, incorporating a number of other upgrades to that particular piece. He mentioned at the time that it was coming from anonymous donor, and he said at some future date he would be back. Well, tonight is that future date. Joining me this evening is Mr. Bruce Boland. He's representing the Brown Family Estate, and I would just want to let you know that there are several criteria in the recently read adopted or restated ordinance dealing with naming rights, and it makes a couple of different references in this document, and I wanted to make you aware of that. One section has to do with that the person on behalf of the requesting party needs to have made a significant contribution to the community. I think that clearly applies in this case, as you saw by the supplemental information that was provided. The second one is, there's a, a criteria in that states that the person is donating more than half of the cost of this particular project, or any particular project, that's grounds for granting the permanent naming of a potential future site. So I think it fits under two different categories, just to ease any concerns that the council might have. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Boland.
Okay.
We feel your pain.
That's embarrassing. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to make this request. I know you have the presentation in front of you, at least I think you do, and you probably have read most of it, but there are reasons I'd like to go through pieces of it tonight. My name is Bruce Boland, I've been a partner and friend of the Browns all my life, and I'm their executor and their trustee. And Marge and Joe Brown, I'm going to cut through a lot of this. They showed up here when this was gravel roads, and this is emotional to me, and I have trouble with it, to be frank about it. But anyway, when Marge died in December, one of her final wishes was to do a number of things for other people, and I'm still doing those, which is typical of the Browns. Many people have known of their love for Fountain Hills, from the time they discovered it in 1970 until their deaths. Joe passed in 1999, Marge a few months ago. One of Marge's final wishes was to do something to give back to the, to, in their case, to give more to the city of Fountain Hills than they have in the past. That was left up to me, to find something to do in Fountain Hills. And during that search, my wife and I, and she wanted to be here tonight, but she's in St. Louis today, and, and I thought about all of the times Marge would bring us down to the Fountain Park, and reminisce about the early difficulties of Fountain Hills, building their pond and putting the engines in that collapsed all the time, and the leaks and all the other problems Joe used to talk about. We used to sit down in a little tiny cafeteria, I remember what it was, what I call a greasy spoon, and have coffee and talk about it. But anyway, she talked a lot about what was going on to make the fountain better, better looking, and, and, and she had lots of trouble getting down there in her later years to really like it, pay more attention to it. And as you probably saw in the presentation, Joe, when I handled his estate, and then finally Marge's, I found 26 stock certificates of investments in Fountain Hills, of which all failed. But he tried. As you saw, he was quite a rooter with the Pratt people, and you saw that in your presentation, but he did that all the time. He was bringing people from Canada, he brought me here back when Shea was a gravel road almost, and he kept saying, you should buy out here, you should buy out here. And I said, I live in Iowa, it's green and black dirt. What about rattlesnakes and sand? Well, I was wrong. Well, not really wrong, they're both good. And so when I gave Joe's eulogy, I discovered a lot of things that I thought I knew about Joe, but more. And then preparing for this was a lot more difficult, because I found so much, how do you get it on three pages? And fortunately, Jerry Butler and Marge were very good friends, and Kathleen was very much involved with Marge. Many of the people behind me, one of them is, one of, as you saw in your, your presentation, one of them, men's club was discovered and decided upon at her breakfast table, and that's Lois Ursom, you know, wheelchair back here, and her daughter. Marge and, Marge and Lois were very good friends, and all kinds of, I could tell you all kinds of stories about them. Anyway, the bottom line is, is that, without going through the entire presentation, I'm asking you for the permanent naming rights to build what I call a wonderful-looking plaza that people can enjoy, there's no taxpayer money involved in any place, and, and we're anxious to get on with it. I would also like to be able to have this presentation used by the press any way they want, because the town is beautiful. I've had five homes here, most of it because Marge and Joe.
Told you to buy them, right?
And we helped build a couple of things here that are still there. And so, and I buy failing companies, and I buy, I'm involved in all those turnsarounds, and, and this has been fun to watch. Joe's biggest problem out here when he first came, why would anybody come to Fountain Hills? Well, he proved that wrong. Look at all of us, beautiful people, and he loved it. So without going any further into this in any more detail, I'm asking for your approval to give us permanent naming rights and get on with building this plaza.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Want to make a comment?
Question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Will there be some kind of a plaque in somewhere in the plaza that will kind of outline and summarize all their activity?
Yes, ma'am. And we've stumbled around with the right words, and we haven't come up with those yet. We're close.
You won.
Yes, the answer's yes.
You'll have to fit it on a little plaque, though, if you don't have three pages.
Big plaque.
I don't know what we're going to do, but there's going to be a plaque there, and it'll be brief and to the point. But Marge and Joe were very successful in their own hometown, where I'm from, Fort Dodge, Iowa, and, and they, they love this better by far, and they were successful there and successful here. Any more questions?
Okay, any more questions?
Questions?
Well, certainly, we, we all got to look at the design already, and Cherry did present it the last time, and we all looked at it and pretty much agreed that it was a, it's a very nice design, it's a wonderful seating area for looking at the park. And it is true that a lot of the seniors, as they get older, they can't get down there because of the, the grass, and this is right off the path, which makes it very accessible to everyone to sit and enjoy our fountain. Is there any questions for either Bob or for Mark? Anything maybe with the design, any questions about anything like that?
Mayor, if I may? Sir, I can feel your emotion, and, and what a wonderful family you've represented, and what an extraordinary gift they're, they're leaving behind for, for Fountain Hills and for their family, and...
And the people at Fountain Hills.
Absolutely. And the work you've done with the Greening Committee, you've mentioned the Butlers, they have, have done a nice job helping to put many of these projects together, so thank you, and on behalf of myself, the family as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Do we need a vote?
It's coming.
Are there any, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No. Any other comments, or would someone like to make the motion?
Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
I move to name the Legacy Plaza in Fountain Park as the Joe and Marge Brown Legacy Plaza.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 6-0.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, family, for the wonderful gift for Fountain Hills. We will enjoy it for a very long time, and our kids and grandkids will enjoy it. All right, we'll go on to consideration of a request to update the Fountain Hills-McDowell Mountain Preserve Master Plan and to designate the trail connecting with Scottsdale as the Andrews-Kinsey Trail.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, it's our dedication night, I think.
Yes.
It's been a number of years, 10 years now, since the original master plan for the preserve was completed. Not surprisingly, the person that we're going to recognize this evening, Roy Kinsey, was the author of that document, went in front of a council, was adopted back in 2004. In the 10 years since that master plan was completed, there have been a number of changes to the proposed trail. It includes, as you look at this, the extension in the lower right of the Town Overlook Trail, remodification of the Western Loop Trail, and at that time, there was only the dream of being able to link to the left to Scottsdale. Those have all now been realized. The subsequent map should show the updates, so you can see where some of those have changed. The overlook trail's been extended further down, the Western Loop Trail's gotten significantly smaller and relocated further to the east, and then finally, in the orange, you'll see the proposed connection to Scottsdale Trail System, which is basically complete except for signage at this point. The City of Scottsdale has already approved, in concept, the Andrews Trail, they're waiting for a consideration from the council to rename the western connection to the Andrews-Kinsey Trail.
Okay.
So with that, I would gladly answer any questions that you might have.
Well, as I understand, Mr. Andrews is the Scottsdale equivalent of our Roy Kinsey, and that's why they decided to name it after both of them.
As I indicated in my staff report, they are both highly recommended in those communities for the work they've done on their respective sides of the preserve.
And we've been trying to name a trail after Roy for a really, really long time, so this, this is a, this is a breakthrough.
He is supportive of the request.
Uh huh, great, okay. Any comments from council? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anyone like to make this motion? Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the update of Master Plan for the McDowell Mountain Preserve and to designate the trail connecting with Scottsdale as the Andrews-Kinsey Mountain Man Trail. The mountain man was mine.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 6-0.
Okay.
Thank you, and I will sit down permanently.
I think that's it for you, yeah. You can go home and recover. Consideration of accepting the bid from Nesbit Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of $3,218,591.29 for the construction of the Shea Boulevard Widening Project.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, this project's been on the books for quite some time. The Development Services Director picked it up and ran with it and got it to this point. As you know, we've had, there, in the CIP, we've had it estimated at $4.3 million. And as you can see with the two projects, the Construction Administration and Review, plus the, the contract bid, is, is under that, and in the amount of around $600,000 at, at this point in time. It's still a long, long way, it's a long project, it's a big project, and it's a long-awaited project to be done. That road is in need of, of, of what this is going to, to provide. So I'll, I'll ask Paul to give you any of the details with the recommendation for the approval of the low bid.
All right, thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Like Tom Andrew said, this is the construction contract for the Shea Widening Project. This project is identified in the Maricopa Association of Governments Arterial Lifecycle Program. That was a program that was voted on by county voters back in 2004, implemented a half-cent sales tax to pay for regional transportation projects. Shea Boulevard is designated as a principal arterial through MAG, it's also on the National Highway System maps, and it's also designated as a principal arterial in the Town of Fountain Hills General Plan. And a principal arterial is three lanes in each direction, and the reason for that is the overall traffic. And the reason for that is the overall traffic volumes. Right now, on any given day, we see between 20,000 and 30,000 vehicles per day on Shea Boulevard within the town limits. The current, the project, what we call the widening project, the only widening is really on westbound Shea from Suaro to Technology. The rest of the road width is wide enough for three lanes, but it's not striped for three lanes because it drops when you get to the west side of the Suaro intersection. The project will also include milling overlay of existing asphalt within those limits. We also did get a grant from McDOT a few years back, so we're going to milling overlay all the way out to where ADOT recently did around the B-line a few years ago. And then we'll also be doing some drainage improvements, intersection improvements, and then we'll be coming on to Suaro in between Trevino and Monterey. So we bid the project out, and we got five bidders. We had a base bid for just standard asphalt. We had a bid alternate for rubberized asphalt, and then we had an owner's allowance for any contingencies. And with the, with the rubberized asphalt, the low bid came in at a little bit over $3.2 million. And the high bid was about $3,336,000. So for five bids on a $3 million project, all five were within a little over $100,000. So very happy about that. That's some extremely tight bidding. So we are recommending the approval of the Nesbit bid with the alternate for the rubberized asphalt. And what the Town Manager did mention is, the overall budget in the capital improvement plan is a little bit over $4.3 million. Now, that includes construction, construction management, some land acquisition for easements, which we really, we got the landowners to basically donate the easement, so we didn't have to pay for that. That saved us a good amount of money. And then there's also the engineering services from the designer through construction to look at shop drawings and request for informations and attend public meetings. So the remaining contracts are really, with this contract, the next contract for construction management, and the remaining design contract are about $3.7 million. So we have about a $600,000 to $650,000 below the estimated budget. Now, the project is paid 70% by MAG, 30% by the town. That's, that's the agreement in the ALCP. We have, we first have to back out the county grant, because that's really outside of this project limit. We did, if you remember, back in late 2011, Wells Fargo took over the Fire Brick Plaza. They paid the town $200,000 to finish off their sidewalks in front of their plaza. MAG has indicated that we can use that $200,000 towards our 30% match. So we're estimating right now, and like Town Manager also said, you know, it's early. We haven't started construction. Both the town and MAG would realize about $350,000 under the programmed budget. So we got some good savings on that. So with that, we're recommending approval of the construction contract and looking at issuing a notice to proceed August 25th, if not probably right after Labor Day, if that doesn't work for the contractor, to get all their, everything lined up with permits. So happy to answer any questions.
Is there, is there any sidewalk involved in this project connecting where it's missing?
Yes, on, on the portions of Shea will be, will be including sidewalk, yes.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, how many days will, how many months will this take?
Good question. Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Brown, the contract is for 270 days, so nine months.
Wow.
Nine months.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of underground work with the, with the drainage and the traffic signal intersection. And also, kind of, I'll kind of talk about on the next item, we're looking at doing the milling and paving at night.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
And then would you please tie this into the Suaro episode of rebuilding Suaro? Suaro starts much later, or is it going to start at the very tail end?
We're, we're planning on bidding Suaro out. Because of the bond sale question, we're planning on having the construction contract for Suaro to council at the last meeting in November. I'm going to assume that the contractor's not going to want to start during the holiday season. So we're, like we originally anticipated, early 2015 to start. Could be some overlap, there will be some overlap, but we're looking at having the Suaro contractor start from Palisades to the north.
Good call. Thank you, Paul.
Anything else? Any other questions for Paul? Do you have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. And entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor?
I move...
Oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve invitation for bids DS 2015-101 with Nesbit Contracting Company Inc. in the amount of $3,218,591.29 for the construction of the Shea Boulevard Widening Project.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the professional services agreement, C 2015-109 with HDR Construction Control Corporation in the amount of $411,878 for construction management services related to the Shea Boulevard Widening Project.
Mayor Kavanaugh, council members, again, this ties into the Shea Boulevard construction. HDR Construction Control Corporation will be providing the construction management for the project. They will have a full-time inspector for nine months and a half-time resident engineer for nine months, and then a little bit of office staff time for their, for their billing and report writing and things like that. For those nine months, the, the hourly rates work out to about $337,000. We also included $25,000 allowance for nighttime inspections, which we plan on having those for the, for the milling and paving. We also included a $40,000 allowance, just in case it runs longer for some reason. And then we also included $10,000 for any quality control, or quality assurance testing that, that we want to have done. So this also is eligible under the MAG-ALCP program for the 70/30 sharing. So if you expended all the money, you'd be looking at MAG's portion $288,000 and the town's portion $125,000. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Questions? Yes, Councilman Elke.
Thank you. Paul, just a, just a comment. There's a lot, a lot of projects going on in town, and I just want to commend you and your staff, and of course, the Town Manager. You guys are doing a fantastic job, so really appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Anything else? Any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Motion?
Sure. Motion to approve professional services agreement, C 2015-109 with HDR Construction Control Corporation in the amount of $411,878 for construction management services related to the Shea Boulevard Widening Project.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Thank you. And number 12, discussion with possible direction to staff regarding cancellation of August 21st, 2014 council meeting due to the 2014 Arizona League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference being held the same week. Ken, did you want to say something?
Counsel's discretion.
Okay, I'll just say something on that. The first thing, when I know that some of us will be going to the league conference, and that Thursday is one of the prime days that we would have an opportunity to meet with service providers, it would be my opportunity to meet with other mayors that I don't normally see. I plan on meeting with groups like Scottsdale CVB, Phoenix Convention Bureau with the league leadership. It's a great opportunity for networking. I basically have Wednesday and Thursday to do all that. I did check with the staff first to see if there was anything pressing that I didn't want to hold any, any projects up or anything that couldn't wait. And they told me no, that the calendar was pretty clear, and that this has been done in the past. So it certainly would be beneficial to me to be able to network for us. And anyone else who was present in the league also would be great if those council people will also engage in networking. Any discussion? Okay. With that, I guess I'll make the motion that we cancel the August 21st, 2014 council meeting due to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference being held the same. May I get a second, please?
Second.
And any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you. Consideration of a lease agreement with Rural Metro Corporation for ambulance staging at Fire Station 1.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you have a lease in front of you for, actually an ongoing condition that we have with Rural Metro Corporation for their, actually, ambulance division. The proposed lease provides a two-year period subject to the term of the, of our fire protection services agreement with Rural Metro for the town. The lease allows the use of space for ambulance, ambulance bunk room, ambulance dayroom, male and female restrooms, EMS, storage cabinet space, and shared employee parking in Station 1. The lease is for $28,400 per annum, and with a 2% annual adjustment. It's recommended to approve the lease with Rural Metro Corporation.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Any questions for Ken? No discussion? Can I have a motion?
Sure, Mayor. I may move to approve the lease agreement between the Town of Fountain Hills and the Rural Metro Corporation for the housing of its ambulance service in Station Number 1.
Your second.
All right. Any other discussion? No speaker cards? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right. Number 14, semi-annual report by Town Manager Ken Buchanan on the progress of implementing the council strategic plan goals and operational priorities for 2013-14.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding our report. I just want to highlight one area. When I, when I first came on here, well, over two and a half years ago, and the reports regarding the long-range vision for the town and its eight strategic values, the strategic directions were enumerated in the plan as guiding principles for those visions and values. The, the, the way the metrics were working, it was, it was not adequately reflecting those long-term goals. It was, it was showing that we were 100% in certain areas. When, when you're talking about a long-term build-out, there's no way that that could work. So you're going to see in the future, those being changed more, the current process will, will apply to the operational priorities, which those priorities actually are part of the strategic plan and the, the goals that are there. So you'll still see that, but you won't see that, that type of measurement being used for the, the long-term vision and values, and the strategic values and those goals in the strategic plan. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that were in the report.
Any questions for Ken? Any other discussion? Okay, that's not an action item. I said I don't think so. Okay. Number 15, well, manager, I don't think has anything else.
I have nothing.
Okay. Summary of council requests and reports of recent activities. Any council members would like to report on anything in particular? If not, then I get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. First...